They do, they do. Their palms up there. For the other. It's a good thing. Property of.
He was able.
Did. I'm not.
Fifteen.
I think they're repeated. Okay, okay. Well. All right. You born? I'm Chris.
And.
Yes. Yeah. Here we are. Wait, wait a minute. This is the back three. Yeah. Good. Be what he can. I think. They said eleven others prepare.
He'll be in the.
It's a, it's a picture.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because they have that. Yeah, it's pretty great. It's probably. January. You know. I'm saying you're a replacement. They're just adding. Down on like. Carry on. Well, what is that? Yes. Deal with the. My house. Um, she took me to UK. But.
You can go and think for a little. And yeah. So. You're so. Oh, oh, there's anyone there. Oh, so you heard it's okay. Oh, there. Oh. No, no, I saw him. Finally, they're not. Get them the thirty.
Pretty funny.
Roughly four.
I'm not. Nothing over here. I don't. I know.
First of all, you're. After her.
He wants. Hey. So.
Really don't want you there.
I never. Yeah. Um, so give us.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Four.
Three. Three way better.
Did you check? Move around more.
It's. But I.
One second.
I'm going to hire. They're really bogus. Little. That's.
We quit.
A little bit. It is.
For your.
They're making sure Jesus.
It's Tempe Jes.
He has.
Jes.
Jesus is a little jealous.
He has anyone. The meeting's. Are you? Someday I'll have it. All right. There's a label right there.
Senator.
The. My leader.
I know. I got.
All right, so I, I think we're gonna try to go ahead and get started here this morning. There we go. Perfect. This is, uh, I would say, welcome to the Tempe City Council and Arizona State Legislators' Joint Meeting for December sixteenth here in the wonderful Don Casano Room. Since this is a public meeting, I've got to go through a couple of formalities here. As an example, members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties and masks are optional for all attendees per City of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually from Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Uh, and we do have a couple of folks on the phone today, and obviously, there might be people watching at home. Also, I was gonna say as well, I, I know Carol wants to remind everyone that we're, we're gonna have to really have one person talking at a time to ensure that people at home or for those participating by phone are able to hear, because the cross talk will make everything completely muffled. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there as well. What I wanted to do before we even get started this morning is sort of do a round of introductions and let everyone introduce themselves, because we have a lot of, uh, new faces at the table here. It's very exciting to see all of the new incoming legislators, and I know we've all had a chance to know one another personally for quite some time, but in these new professional roles, it's definitely exciting. So especially for all of, um, for the people who are moving up and for the people who are just starting, just wanted to say congratulations. I know it's, uh, an incredible honor to serve in the state legislature, and we appreciate the work that you're gonna be doing on behalf of the City of Tempe and all the other communities you represent. With that said, I think what I will do is start at the end of the table there, and we'll just go around and do a quick round of introduction. So I'll start with our city attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sonia Blaine, Tempe City Attorney.
Morning. Keith Burton, Tempe City Manager.
Hi, Andrew James, City Manager. Welcome.
Representative Melody Hernandez for this district, LD eight, also now one of the minority within the Democratic.
Um, Representative Left Ludena Austin, uh, representing LD nine, so we have two precincts of Tempe, but we take those very seriously. Uh, Representative-elect Patty Contreras, LD twelve, which is, uh, south part of Tempe, south of, um, six.
Seth Blatman, LD nine. We love those two precincts. Amazing.
Uh, Stacy Travers, LD twelve, along with Patty.
I am Senator-elect Eva Birch from LD nine, and of course, while we only have a little sliver of Tempe, we know that the decisions we make are going to impact all of the cities, and, um, we're excited for the opportunity.
Uh, Joel Navarro, Councilmember of City of Tempe.
Corey Woods, Mayor, City of Tempe.
Senator Adams, Vice Mayor, City of Tempe.
Arlene Chin, good morning, everyone, City of Tempe.
I'm Senator Mitzi Epstein, and I live in Tempe, which is the center of the universe. And I always tell everybody, and I hope you, wherever you live, feels like the center of the universe to you too.
Good morning, everybody. Tom Dunsting, Deputy City Manager.
Good morning, Mark Day, City's Budget Director.
Good morning, Greg Reese, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief, and I live in the center of the universe.
Good morning and welcome. Rosa Chauftine, Chief Deputy City Manager and Chief Innovation Officer.
Good morning, Carissa Rossia, Deputy City Park.
And let's get, go to the back as well. March.
Eric Iverson, uh, interim chief of staff.
Thank you so much. Let's also make sure we go to the folks on the phone here as well. Who did I see? Senator Mendez.
Hello, everybody. Uh, Senator Juan Mendez. Uh, I'm also in the center of the universe, but I'm also probably in the center of Tempe, so I think I'm even got the best of it all. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, Irma.
Hi, good morning. My name is Irma Hallen-Bicane, and I'm Deputy Community Health and Human Services Director.
Anyone else on the phone that I missed by chance, Carol?
Just staff.
Just staff. Okay. Well, thank you, staff, for being here. I appreciate that. So I want to make sure that we keep everything on time. I know this meeting is scheduled for ten o'clock, so I'm gonna, as opposed to kind of giving a long wind-up here, I'm gonna launch directly into the staff presentation. So, uh, what I'm gonna do is turn it over to our Chief Deputy City Manager, Rosa Chauftine, and our Fire Medical Rescue Chief, uh, Greg Reese, who are gonna be providing the presentation on homeless outreach for us, which is item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, thank you for the opportunity. It's really, it's my honor to present to you the work of many city departments on the issue of unsheltered in our community, um, which is kind of timely, given some of the recent, uh, news, um, regarding some of our sister cities. So we'll kind of circle back, because as some things develop with our sister cities, it's interesting that we didn't really have a playbook on how we were gonna accelerate the work on unsheltered in our cities, but just so happen to go through some of the same mandates in our. Receiving from judges. So, um, we'll tie it all together for you, but thank you again for the opportunity. As you can see here, we don't have it titled unsheltered. It's really, has become involved into a public health conversation and safety for our city. Um, and that slide. I'm gonna turn it over to our chief to talk about specifically our river bottom and the whole community well-being with regards to our waterways. Um, this is not just local to Tempe. Uh, they are San Francisco, Las Vegas, a lot of other cities are grappling with the waterways and the kind of paradriven plans for flood risk management. A lot of the unsheltered are looking for waterways, um, for obvious reasons, especially when it's hot. Um, but it presents a lot of risk for the individuals and the community. So I'm gonna turn it over to the chief, who first brought this forward regarding the concerns, and we'll show you.
Again, thank you for being here this morning. Um, so I often start off with this, this slide, or we do, um, start off with this slide, and, and I often pose this question, and that is, how did we get here? And here is where we are today, but how did we get to this point that we took on this, this, uh, large project? It is truly a large project, and we have worked with, um, the rest of the valley, uh, on this, because when you talk about the river bottom, they're seeing the same exact things. We also understand that what we do here is going to result in a migration down the river bottom into our, um, other partners in the valley here. So. This was brought to my attention by our men and women who provide the services where the rubber hits the road. And their concerns were for not only the people who live in the river bottom, but obviously, their ability to provide the services that we provide up here, when I say up here, up here on the, uh, roadway here. Um, some of the challenges that they faced, and they were communicating to me, were, um, response times. Response times are a, a big deal to us. You know, if we can get to the residence or the building in, in five, six minutes and make quick access, that's, that's, that's our goal. We get to the edge of the river bottom, we don't have easy access into the river bottom. So there's an extremely, um, long delay in our ability to provide the medical services. From a fire standpoint, uh, I think you'd be shocked if we were to share you, with you, what, what actually has occurred down there in a short period of time by way of people actually building homes. So that is structures down there. And there's no fire prevention efforts that go in, or are put in place down there, and we don't have the same systems at the hydrant, the waterways, and all that, that we have up here. Um, the number, the numbers, not only the call volume that has occurred here, but the number of units and the dedicated hours over the years has increased, and some of those are campaign events, are fires. We're, we're on those events for a very long time. Our time to get to a patient down there and remove a patient from that environment is significantly longer than it would be out of a residence or any, anywhere out here on the street. And then our responders also had safety concerns for themselves, um, to the point that we had to have a police escort every time I worked with the police chief, and we have, we had a police escort in place for both sides of the river bottom. So, um, I won't go over the numbers, but I think the, the one, the annual total, as you can see, and the one was September, when, when we started our efforts, we, you could see where we were in September. So we were going to pass up where we were, um, in the previous year. Next slide. Um, that caused us to come together and put an incident management team together, which was all of the stakeholders, not only here locally, um, but all of the stakeholders. This was a large effort. Uh, we have several, uh, directors here in the city that took on the role as the incident management team. It was not the fire chief nor the police chief. Um, we wanted this to be as humane, we wanted to be respectful, we wanted to do it right. What right was, we didn't know, but we brought everybody in. This was not a fire department effort, because we had a problem going in the river bottom. This was a much larger, uh, event than just doing fire prevention efforts. So we put an incident management team together, and within that incident management team, we had objectives, and those objectives are up here, which is phase one, phase two, phase three. You can see by the timeline, um, we're out here in December. It, it has been going as we planned. Um, we'll talk a little bit about what some of those efforts were early on to make sure we were as humane and respectful as we could be. Um, but you can see in phase one, what we were doing, it was about the people. It was about doing the right thing for the unsheltered, the people, our community that was living down there. Then we went to clearing the debris. When we're roughly, I, I'm, I'm gonna say around, around a third of the way through, and I have lost count, and unless Rosa, you know where we are, or anybody else can throw it out here. When, when we're clearing debris, not doing any of the, the shrub, shrub work, just the debris, we had pulled a hundred tons of debris out of there at about a, a third of the way. When we talk about going from the border of Tempe West to the dam, a, a hundred tons of materials, that was presented to me as fifty medium-sized vehicles were pulled out of the river bottom. And then we'll go on to do the pruning of the vegetation and eventually the maintenance, the long-term maintenance, so we do not return to where, um, we currently are. Next slide. When we break up the area of concern, that is, the river bottom, down the river bottom, we have section one, uh, that's presented here on the map. It's from the, roughly the border of Tempe over to Priest, then we have section two, which is Priest, over to the dam, and then we have section three, which is a little more complicated, and we'll show you here shortly. Reason it's complicated is because it is not the city of Tempe. We have multiple partners, jurisdictional boundaries within there, but we are working with our partners. We met with them early on. Everybody is on board, um, and we are putting the plans together. We actually had an incident management team meeting yesterday, and we are progressing in that area. This is City of Tempe. Obviously, Phoenix to the west of us, we've communicated with them. Um, this picture does not present really what we, what it looks like down there right now. It is, it's a forest down there. It is pretty dense. Next slide. Um, over here, this is section three, McClintock, the far end of the slide here, the southern portion of the slide, that is the portion that is section three. Um, and we do, we, uh, we put the same efforts in place there with the, um, relocation of the, uh, unsheltered that live down there. We are working on debris, we'll work on debris removal and the pruning of that area, but again, we're working with our partners who have, that, we have responsibility for providing services down in there, policing, fire, but we don't have, we, we don't own the property to go in and start doing the work, so we brought our partners in, and we're continuing to work with them. Okay, next slide. This is no longer in place, but just to give you an idea of how deep the IMT went into do, into, um, making sure that we did this right, we put together what we call a resource village, and I won't go through all of, it, you can see up there all of the services that we put in place. This was over at, over by the TCA in an open lot over there, Tempe Center for the Arts, just west of. We brought in all of the resources. We brought in, uh, the Conex boxes, uh, trailers. We brought everything in to support this, these efforts, and we had some amazing people who went back down into the river bottom, communicated with the community down there, let them know what we are doing, and also told them where the resource village was to assist them in that remove, moving from the river bottom out.
Vice Grab.
Yes.
How, how, how many people went through the resource village?
That's the next slide. Yep. Yep. Um, we'll get there in just a second, but what we wanted to do, what I wanted to do with that is just, I wanted to give you the lay of the land, that it wasn't, um, a heavy-handed going to tell everybody you gotta leave by this day. And we did have a box that was dedicated to the belongings, where they could relocate those belongings, and we'd store them for them. Um, we did not have, as you would imagine, um, or you wouldn't imagine, you think you'd fill the box up storing stuff, their belongings. It wasn't like that at all.
It was.
Um, and, and this was not all about storage and, and physical stuff. This was why we had the right people there too, to help them, the experts in this effort. Next slide.
Thanks, Chief. So to Captain Number Adams' question, a lot of people want to know how many people engaged in services, because when we step back to what the chief is saying, we didn't have a playbook. We knew that this was, um, tough work, right? I think one of our council members said it best in the meeting, that it's very sensitive work. Um, we had media asking us questions, what are we gonna do with migration patterns, neighboring city, neighboring, uh, HOAs, neighborhood associations that were asking, what are we gonna do when they migrate into our parks? How are we handling this? And you all know Tempe better than anyone, I, I would hope, that our north star is always people first. Uh, we are a very compassionate city, so we bled with that, and when the chief says that that first phase was only people, that means we did not touch debris, and we did not touch, um, pruning, because we saw it as people are living here, this is their homes, right? Um, we know that in essence, we are attempting kind of engaging in services. Eviction notices need to be posted in a river bottom, if you can imagine that. That's exactly how our legal team, there is a think tank of folks trying to make this decisions, and we, we pray to the SOPs, because we think as other cities start approaching this, at least we have a playbook. So we estimated about a hundred and eighty people were living there, um, through our resource village and other contacts with our Hope Team, which is our homeless outreach team, and CARE seven, which is that crisis outreach. Seventy-five people were engaged through this resource village, and actually, our team met people where they weren't. They didn't just stay at the resource village, which is by the, uh, by the waterway, they actually went down into, uh, the river bottom. So it's a sixty-six percent, um, success rate with getting folks engaged, yes.
Uh, what percentage of that, uh, sorry, Melody, what, what percentage of that do you know, uh, veterans? And you've had on the previous slide, veteran supports, and what, what does that encompass? And would there be a benefit to support services like fire and police to have, um, some kind of training to be able to, um, to be able to, to, to detect or, uh, you know, see any mental health, um, red flags when serving these people? I know that's a fair question.
No, no worries. So one of the first things I'm gonna talk about in just a slide or two next, one of the first things we did when we started looking at accelerating this work in July was hiring data analysts for human services. It wasn't an additional crisis response person, it was a data analyst, because of the questions that you're asking. How are we gonna serve the public if we don't even know who they are? Many of them don't have IDs, they don't have paperwork. Um, I don't have the question to the top, top of my head as far as how many veterans, but we can get you that information. Um, we did start recognizing the importance of capturing that. The other thing that is not shared yet with all of you is, this wasn't just the city of Tempe. This is Circle the City for the Medical Needs, this is our Veteran Affairs, this is Native Connections, so many different nonprofits that were partners with us to make sure that, um, not all services, we have a variety and diversity of people living in the river bottom that need different services.
Very long time we had, yes. Right. With the veterans. Like, and for, for, uh, many years, we've had a service called the Patient Advocate Service, and we actually were contracted with the Veterans Hospital for a very long time. Um, that contract recently ended. And that, and that was totally.
Because of, because of funding or because the contract?
Management. Management. Management over there canceled it, but, um, we worked closely with them and our first responders to identify veterans at risk.
Uh, the other thing we do have is CARE seven has a veterans manager, manager, basically a case manager, that if they are identified as specific veteran, um, different services are available. So then that CARE seven, uh, case manager takes the veterans. So, uh, very, very focused services on, on the population. In the next slide, um, what I mentioned about our acceleration work with unsheltered, in July, we took a whole different approach. Um, we created what, what we call a thirty-sixty-ninety-day plan, which is like anything, when you triage a situation, not just the river bottom, we knew that we wanted to make some headway, um, on creating public health for everyone in our community, not just one group over the other. And that meant a couple of things. I'm not gonna highlight all of it, but I do want to share with you some of the things that I believe have made a difference for our community is that twenty-four-seven coverage for homeless issues. It's happening twenty-four-seven in, in every community. I just don't understand why we even had a gap, right? The things we learned about the service needs. Um, we also created a one number. Uh, people need different entry points into cities to understand how to communicate. You have many different generations. Some people like getting information from a water bill, like communicating through a three-one-one. We needed to offer a one number. And part of that is information that we received from our Public Safety Advisory Task Force that the mayor convened in twenty-twenty, and that is recognizing that a lot of people are calling the police department for unsheltered issues when it really should be diverted, those calls diverted. So it was the intersectionality of what we learned from, uh, the Public Safety Advisory Task Force and understanding that not more needs to be placed on that police officers, but quite frankly, it should be crisis counselors who are creating the outreach. So that one number has been a game changer for our community, and it's also a lot of communication and behavior change for everyone in our community about like, where do you call, right? Um, and think about the differences of needs for crisis calls. Um, the other thing I wanted to share is also, we had the point-in-time count that we all know that happens regionally. The city actually created another point-in-time count in August, more data for us to understand, are our strategies helping? What is it looking like, landscape in our city? And thanks to our downtown authority right here in the core, which we know that we have a, a higher concentration of the unsheltered. Kate Borders, the executive director, has offered to do a daily count for us to understand kind of the ebb and flow of migration patterns, which once again, has made a difference. The bottom, um, warrant resolution program, understanding and speaking to our unsheltered, our councilmembers and staff met with the unsheltered be, for weeks, to understand what are the barriers to getting you into services. Those are some tough conversations, because it's a array of diversity of, of reasons. One of them was fear of being arrested because of their warrants. Warrants are misdemeanors. Uh, so we worked with Chief Presiding Judge, uh, and Alexis Allen, our court administrator, on creating a warrant resolution program locally. And, uh, we are also speaking to our sister cities about perhaps offering that in other cities as well. Just some other ones that I'd like to highlight is, um, activating our Hope Volunteer Program, getting people to understand, right? Um, what, what is taking place in your city, um, because people were frustrated, why aren't you taking care of the unsheltered, or why aren't you responding fast enough? Um, but we also have a very compassionate city that wants us to do more, bringing people in, complete transparency on everything that we are doing. So we have had many more volunteers because of that from our community. And then the, I've mentioned before, the onboarding of the data analyst, and then our business community has stepped up tremendously. Uh, focus groups with our businesses and strategies and funding. Next slide.
Well, just a really quick thing on that, uh, I bumped into someone who's a small business owner a few days ago at a, I think it was at, uh, Landings Credit Union, they were having their Tempe Chamber Mixer. And just sort of a compliment for our staff, is this person approached me and said, I came to that meeting that you had in the council chambers that, that day, that large-scale meeting where people talked about everything we're doing from the Hope Team to the CARE seven units, to the, to the IMT. And they said, my expectation was I was going to come and have to, I was kind of ready to fight almost, to sort of talk to you about what I felt needed to do. And once I heard all of the people get up from the city and talk about all the things you're doing when it comes to homeless outreach and prevention and mental health services, I said, they literally are doing everything I would have asked them to do. I, I was so impressed how far ahead the City of Tempe seems to be ahead, uh, compared to a lot of other surrounding communities and communities across the country. So it was a very nice compliment. I, I, I hadn't had a chance to pass it on to staff, but I figured what better place to frankly, uh, pass that on is right here in front of all of our legislators, so.
Good to have gone with what. We were passing that along to a lot of people who are not in this room doing the hard work, so thank you, Mayor, for that. Um, so one of the things with strategic planning at the city and being a data-driven organization, we always look at, what is the end goal? And understanding that we're not gonna eradicate homelessness, right? And, and manage those expectations as far as, what are we gonna measure to identify what success looks like, or what does success look like, so we can measure those things to see if the needle's moving? So we came up with some progress indicators. These progress indicators are on a dashboard, are being created by our GIS, uh, Dr. Stephanie Dietrich, she's outstanding, creating a dashboard to the community. So one of some of the things that we do know is, we want to know how many people are beginning, are engaged, and how many people are accepting services, and the recidivism rate of our hotels, transitional housing, to see what that looks like, um, our available housing, um, case management key. If I can say anything about the game changer for, um, reducing recidivism is case management. Um, and more to come on that from our city in months, but we're working on that. Encampments, the reduction of encampments. I applaud the city, the leadership of the city. I'm not talking about myself, I'm talking about the mayor and council and people, executives, because it's hard to say you're gonna reduce encampments. People get really nervous about that. DOJ, ACL, uh, AU, ACLU, um, talking about the importance of encampments. The way we've seen it in Tempe is, streets are not, streets are not homes. They're just not. We are better than this. We need to find where those encampments are and offer the services to people, and if we need to have the conversation three or four times, we're gonna have the conversation three or four times. But also partnering with, with the companion piece to compassion is the enforcement, and making sure that we stand strong on, we have to enforce at times to make sure that people, um, help them make some decisions about their lives. Um, point-in-time counts, as I mentioned before, it's a three-point-in-time counts, the regional, the local, and then now the downtown. And then the community reported concerns, our three-one-one, council communicators, mayor and council get stopped all the time as far as what are the concerns in the community. So the complaints, you know, are they coming, are they going down regarding homelessness? And then real quickly, we created the dashboard from the beginning, homeless solutions. You can go on our website and follow along with us as far as the engagement. The next screen also shares with you the reporting dashboard for encampments. We ask people to report the encampments. It's almost crowdsourcing from the community. Instead of just calling 911 or 311, they can go online for those who are comfortable with it, report the encampments and follow along as the encampments are triaged for priority. Some are more acute than others. And then the removal of those encampments. And that has been a huge, huge work team approach from our community services, our Parks and Rec, community development, I can't say it, PD help team, going to those encampments, identifying what the needs are, and then obviously even looking at the removal of the debris after, when it's abandoned. And that is a huge cost for our city. Next screen.
My question?
Yep.
How do you determine why it's?
That's a great question. We probably had two meetings of discussion of what's acute. I can tell you high level is families, public right of way. Are they on a street thoroughfare that is a risk to themselves and pedestrians or cars along the way? So it's really based on, we've seen a lot more families on the streets. Encampment reporting dashboard, as you can see here, people have been following along. And the next screen tells us the point in time counts. I think I was speaking, one of you earlier today, this morning, about the increase of unsheltered. I've been with the city for 30 years. It has never been, just even the last two years, it's been through the roof as far as our numbers. So just real quickly, if you look at city of Tempe numbers, we're about 394 in January 2022. In August of 2022, it's 515. And we know that the increase from our transitional, or from our I help, which is our transitional housing that we have with partnership with our faith community, we're hearing that 50% of the individuals going into the overnight stays in the faith community and churches are 55 and up. So the demographics of seniors, seniors living on fixed income.
How much would you say in terms of the increase is putting, how much of a strain is it putting on your ability to remove the barriers to access holistically the services that you feel that you require in order to be able to process that increase in the role of unsheltered citizens? You feel you can manage it right now? Do you feel it's starting to become overwhelming?
I think, I think people should pay attention to what we're doing in Tempe. I think the teams here are, it is, I'm not saying this because I am a Tempe resident or a Tempe employee working on this. It has been a think tank of different departments and our nonprofits, our hospitals, our, we're also a partner in the Innovation Track for Homelessness with Mayor Bloomberg out of New York. It's a year-long kind of looking at data and new strategies. I think if there are barriers, we took on those barriers and we look for wraparound, right?
Yeah.
We just-
We didn't know what we were doing.
But you still feel like you're managing, not feeling overwhelmed at this point with the increase?
Well, I'll say with the river bottom, it was obviously overwhelming when we looked at, when I looked at the numbers and I brought it forward. And if, you know, I would like to take this opportunity to say, where we are today, I got a lot of people to thank because you can imagine what I do for, who I represent and their concerns, and I bring it forward. And deputy city manager, the other deputy city manager, mayor council, and all the directors of departments jumped on board and rallied it. And there's a, I'll give you one other piece of data that gets reported out in our incident management team, and that is our calls for service from our first responders in the fire department. We're running approximately 30,000 calls a year, of which 17% report unsheltered. That's a staggering number. That truly is a staggering number. So we're working on it. Do we feel overwhelmed at times? Yeah. Yes, I would say we do at times. But I think what Rosa said is on the money, the city of Tempe is unlike any other. We're trying to do the right thing with the people.
Yeah, just to add in, and with the mag group that I'm on, to watch Tempe, I think we are doing some special stuff. And in fact, that group of all cities is asking, hey, what has Tempe been doing? So to that point, and I appreciate what these guys do because it's, staff-wise, I know they're along with their other duties, right, are really making a dent in this stuff. And it takes time and effort. But at the end of the day, it comes down to, even on the national level, on committees I sit on, it's the staffing of those, you know, outreach teams. And not only staffing, but keeping the staffing. Because what happens is it's a burnout too, often, or there's a transition. So how do you manage that? How do you keep that? And how do you keep it going for a duration? That's critical. And federal money and lobbying from the state level, you know, on those issues, it's not just in Arizona, obviously. It's nationwide. So there is absolute momentum. But it's how the money can get to the local, because the local has the impact. It's just a matter of getting the money to the local.
Just quickly-
Senator Burson?
Yes, thank you. As you are triaging and processing these communities and individuals, is there an effort being made to identify and address chronic illnesses and addiction, those types of things? Or is that out of the scope of what you're doing?
Now, so our CARE7 team has been in existence since the 1990s. Master level therapists who are very seasoned and working with folks who are having mental health needs. So I don't know how cities are doing it without having subject matter experts who are therapists, counselors, who work well with our fire department, large police department to help identify and triage, like you're saying. You know, we need to understand the public health and the threats of unpredictable behavior. And I think that's some of the things that we hear from our community. And I think it's the trifecta of having the CARE7, fire, and PD work well together to help identify high risk. Who's the lead and who's the lag, I always say. If it's a public safety issue, well, obviously, we're not going to send the counselors in, but they co-response together. There's a co-response. And then who takes the lead? It is determined by that kind of triage, if that makes sense.
Okay. So it's part of what you do, but some of it is managed within your-
Human service.
Some of it is personal.
And you get people to, you know, rehab or whatever, if they're having drug or alcohol problems, you know, they have the services to network and get them hooked up with treatment, if that's part of your question.
It is. Yeah. And the other side of that, of course, is chronic illness, because there are, you know, a high number of people who are homeless, who are, who suffer from chronic illnesses. And that doesn't always get addressed at the same time, because there's obviously a lot of moving parts already to what you're doing. I was just curious if that was part of what we're doing here. That's interesting.
We're doing it all, basically. We're hitting every, every need, you know, we have someone to respond to every need possible.
We're currently reworking the Patient Advocate Service, but that is a program that has a nurse on the vehicle that works with people that first responders have identified. And they work closely with the CARE7, as we're talking about. And they're the ones that work with chronic illnesses, get people connected to not only insurance, but they can communicate to the physicians and nurses and practitioners. And so, yeah, we're reworking that.
That's exactly the answer.
But it's been in place for a very long time, is my, really my point.
It's been that wraparound services, almost point of everything. Not just, hey, we're taking care of this problem. It's looking at, and I think that's what we're, it gets you at a better foundation, the overall services that take care of the issue. Senator Burson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back to the question about, about being overwhelmed. Because it's interesting. And let me reframe and re-approach the concept of being overwhelmed. I think we all have had conversations and have heard and read conversations about other communities that feel overwhelmed by this challenge, right? It exists in many other places also. But I think that's what the team realized, we have to do something within the 40 square miles of Tempe. This can't, we have to do something within our community. And it was the comprehensive effort of many other professionals. So fire, fire, medical rescue dealt with it on their own before the 30, 60, 90. CARE7 dealt with it. And it was, and our partners, our nonprofit partners in the community dealt with it. But this was a bringing together of, let's work together and try to, try to take some steps to reduce it, to address it, because it is overwhelming. And I think-
I just interrupted you. I didn't mean it as sort of-
Oh, no, no.
Esoteric, like philosophical sense. I mean, like, the actual number of resources that you have, do you feel like you're managing?
No, no. I understood your, I wanted to reframe it in terms of leadership and what calls into action-
Right.
-in a community. And it's that feeling of, it is an overwhelm-
Yes.
-challenge. So then what do we do about it?
Yeah.
Right? That's-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, that I understood. And that's why it was being, you know, so, you know, not aggressively, but so, you know, prioritized as a need to address. But, you know, I'm thinking more logistically, like, with the number of resources that you have and partners that you're working together, do you feel that at the moment you can handle the 592 families? Or do you feel like you don't have enough, you know, resources and support? That's kind of what I meant it as. Yes, conceptually, it's very overwhelming in any city. But it was like, do you have, like, one homeless, one unsheltered family with seven, you know, seven support networks, as opposed to two support networks that you have? I mean, that's kind of where I was going with it.
Do we need more resources? Absolutely, yes. For the record, absolutely, yes. Because I keep saying to the team, I don't know how other cities would do it.
Right.
You know, we're in a great financial situation as far as how we manage our, you're going to hear from our chief financial officer, Tom Duncey, and our budget director in just a few minutes. And they can give you some dollar amounts of how expensive it has been just to even address the river bottom, millions of dollars. And I think about towns like Guadalupe and other places that are also having the same issues with unsheltered. It's tough. And we're just lucky that we have had a very cohesive city, working from mayor and council to our city staff, that understand and trying to cut corners wherever we can, then also looking through other jurisdictions to help us.
Yeah. I mean, that's a belaborate, but it does seem like you guys are, I've worked in this space for several years with unsheltered and disabled veterans. And the biggest obstacle was always that access to services. And, you know, it sounds like you're providing that. You know, one of the things that we would do is, you know, they would go to the VA and they would get vouchers, and they would be shipped off somewhere else where they couldn't, you know, first of all, they would arrive. And even on a campus, you know, the services would be, you know, miles away from each other, and they couldn't access it. And then once you had it, they would give you a voucher and then shelter you somewhere, you know, miles away from where your services were. But it sounds like between the case managers that you've got and the services and support that you have in place, you're, you know, you've got the biggest, you're addressing the biggest hurdle. And that is that the access to services for everybody. And they're, you know, each have their own particular needs and they need service. So, sorry, I don't mean to belabor it, but we want to move on.
Thank you for that. Yes. And I just have a couple more slides. But the 30, 60, 90 day, we can move to the next slide. 30, 60, 90 day is almost the triage of the unsheltered. We also, through that, have identified that we need to convert our human services department to more of a community, public health department, a local one, and co-locate with some of our nonprofits. So more to come on that and regarding how do we best serve. So people are not traversing the city to different services. They're all going to have it on one campus. And that's a partnership with Tempe Community Action Agency. So one of the things that we have learned is from entry point, the continuum of care.
I'm sorry to interrupt this. I've got Vice Mayor Adams, Representative Austin.
Yes, yes. So I'm also a social worker. And so previously, the last four years, we did have, like, all these services, like, located in separate areas. People were not communicating with one another. There were some territorial, like, that's, you know, you're getting stepping on my toes, these kinds of things. And since Rosa has taken over this section, we have been able to combine and work together with our nonprofits. I mean, it's completely been a game changer. So it's basically housed under one section, and then Rosa can work with everyone. And that's what's changed. She's been a game changer for this situation. Because it wasn't always like this, but it is now. And so is Greg, and so is the police chief. So, because they all work together so well. But so we are really coordinating. We have really reached a very good point. And of course, we always need more resources. But we are, like, doing an incredible job now. And I'm so happy about it, because I was really beaten on the drum for a long time to get things moving and work as a social worker, you know, to bring systems together and all of that. And that's what I was trying to do, but I kept hitting my head against the wall. And Rosa has completely changed that situation. So I had to say that. She needs to get credit for what it's deserved.
Appreciate it. Absolutely. Representative Boss?
Yeah, I was wondering what your relationship is like with neighboring cities. There's definitely, obviously, transit, and obviously, super close to Nellie, nine of Mesa, obviously, same district, but wondering if they have been supportive of these efforts, if they're finding that their efforts are not as concerted. We can do, you know, state representatives and representatives of this area to help strengthen that.
Thank you for that question. I always say, no one ever does anything alone, especially not happening something like this. The chief apologizes, he is in a mediation, so he had a runoff. But he will tell you that one of the first things we've done is talk to our neighboring cities about what we're doing, because we know the migration pattern isn't just stays within our own city. It moves from city to city. And also, the town of Guadalupe has been a huge partner with our wastewater testing, which is public health. That's not part of our presentation. I'm happy to share that with you at a later time. But it's also making sure that we pay for their wastewater testing, because we know that early warning signals in their community, there, many of them are, the 6,500 residents they have are essential workers in our, in our city. So a lot of those things is just easy enough for us to partner together. So, yeah, lucky for us, we have great communication. People first, I always say. That means our sister cities. So just a couple more slides to let you know that we are similar to what I call the social innovation of what we're doing next, is steps into housing, the continuum of care. Our mayor and council have been very generous to have transitional housing in a hotel that we purchased with our funds. And we actually have two hotels that were leasing some units in one, and then we have a hotel that we have transitional housing. The partnership is really with Tempe Community Action Agency. As I mentioned, they have I help, which is a partnership with local churches, where people are able to spend the night at the church. They offer case management and meals. And then what I call working for, they go work. They work in the morning and move. But that is a partnership with local churches, and that rotates. What we've realized is there is a partnership there in the continuum of care of people who are there into our transitional housing, into what the mayor and council have created, which is Hometown Barrow, which is our affordable housing through our housing division in perpetuity. And I'll share a couple of slides on that. But it is the collaboration, once again, with our nonprofits, everyone who is working in this space to understand how do we make that pathway easier for people? And for them to see themselves graduating to the next level of housing, and it's basically creating a new opportunity for them in their lives. And then the last two slides is just, I think, the question regarding resources and funding. There are limitations in Arizona for affordable housing, and we see that as- and funding. There are limitations in Arizona for affordable housing. And we see that as an important part of what we're doing with the unsheltered. So what you hear, see here is kind of what the city of Tempe has committed towards homeless programs and services. I don't need to share the numbers, that's just a number, a snapshot. I'm sure it's higher now. But we're looking at what we need to do for the supplemental process for next budget year. And I think that is something for all of us to think about. Non-congregate shelter, it's been about $1.6 million. And then the hometown for all funding is $18 million. I, that is outstanding for a city to be able to do that. And that is, in the next screen, you will see, we created a dashboard. So the public sees, it is the social innovation of how do you create, how do cities work within the confines, the confinement of what they have within the state, and try to create a funding source that helps create affordable housing in perpetuity. Something that doesn't just change over and create market rate housing. So what you see there, the $18 million is city investment, about almost $5 million through basically permit fees that are diverted to this fund. Donations received, actually developers have become partners in donating towards this fund. And then the pledge total has been $10.8 million, which equates to the $18 million. And we have acquired a few properties. And I'm not sure if the mayor wants to speak to that, but we've acquired a few properties that we are looking to build affordable housing units. We just had a housing inventory presented to the mayor and council, identifying how many units we need and what type of AMI. Our work in workforce housing has has proved dividends. We now know that it's affordable. And actually, the housing inventory that we need is luxury. We know it's an ecosystem that helps to pay for all of it. So we're in the conversations about more strategies to help address that zero to 80 AMI, which is what we need as far as housing stock in Tempe. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor and see if there's anything else.
That's good. Thank you, Rosa. Really appreciate it. And I know, thank you, Chief Reese as well, who had to go to mediation. Anyone else have any further questions? Because I know Rosa covered a couple of things on the housing portion. I see Senator Mendez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had maybe one or two technical questions, and then I guess bigger overall questions. So really easy. There was mention of a ton of debris that was that was removed. And I was wondering if there's any, I mean, debris, I don't know what debris sounds like to everybody else. But when I hear debris, I hear personal items. And then when the, when the amount of, I don't know, you know, when they were talking about how much it was, it kind of scared me. So I was wondering if there's any idea that we could share of what kind of debris was was removed from from the area?
Thank you for that question. I can tell you, everything from wood, people, people had built structures with wood, fires, old tents. And I think what the chief had mentioned was, we always offered when the individuals, if they, if they accepted services, or even if they didn't want to accept services, we had storage units that were available to them to store their items. And that was the trust building between the HOPE team, CARE 7, and the unsheltered. So when we talk about debris, is the debris wasn't touched, if we remember what the chief said, the first two months were really just engaging with individuals. The debris wasn't started, we didn't clean it up until everyone had been engaged in services or had left the area.
Thank you for that clarification. And then with the discussion on the removal of the vegetation, this definitely, I mean, I feel like it's sound superficial just asking it. But was there any consideration for the environmental impact? Because I feel like it's that river area is just huge, you know, super sensitive for the the animals and the ecosystem. So I was wondering, I mean, did we just go in there and just take everything that we didn't like? Or was there some kind of attention to making sure we didn't make, you know, ripple effects for the environment?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife were partners with us. We also have a city arborist that had been at the table for the incident management team from the start. So everything, basically hand in hand with environmentalists, environmentalists from U.S. Game and Wildlife.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And then I was wondering, this might be a little more sensitive. But is there, have there been any arrests? And are we talking about how many people have been arrested in this whole situation?
To my men, so this is the last day, we had extended the basically, September 8, I believe, was the last day for people to vacate that first phase that we shared. We extended the deadline date from September 8 to additional week. Then the HOPE team went there. And I think if I remember, there were about eight individuals left. And who four resisted, they were cited. But so basically, it was four individuals, the other four actually engaged in services and were in our hotels.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. My next questions might be, I mean, I definitely just want to voice some things. Before I was in office, I spent a couple years working in the services for the unsheltered. So I mean, I guess I more of just like comments or things I want to share with you all. I mean, I definitely appreciate, you know, the focus and all the effort that's been going into this. But I did hear some things that were maybe a little triggering to me, but just because of my background and my, you know, experience in in everything. There was a couple of times where people mentioned there not being a playbook, you know, or, you know, may having to make a playbook. And I would just want to advise you all into, I mean, how that might sound to people in the homeless, you know, the people who provide services for the homeless. I mean, you could just Google the word, and everybody's got a playbook. So the idea that, you know, we're, when I heard somebody say that there was no playbook, my first thing was like, oh, my God, are we just making up this as we go along? So I would want to caution against, you know, how we throw that that word around. And then specifically check in and see if, I mean, because there are all these, you know, different entities or agencies that are providing these kinds of playbooks or guidance, guidance around, you know, people who are unsheltered. I was wondering, just, you know, the one off the top of my head, have we consulted with the CDC in in how they would advise us dealing with this specifically? I mean, they have a whole guidance around, you know, I don't know what the correct word is. But when we are like sweeping people out of visibility, they definitely have a whole, you know, like, this is best practices. So I would want to know, you know, if we're guiding by CDC guidance, or if it's something that we could look into. And then I definitely don't mean for that to be the main question. I have like one or two more, but just wanted to know if, just wanted to check in on that point really quick.
So thank you for that question. I know that I was only given a few minutes to talk about specifically the unsheltered. And just for clarification, when the chief and I refer to playbook, we refer to it to the waste, to the waterway of how do you, how do you work in a major river bottom, not necessarily the people talking about addressing a river bottom and everything that goes along with that. So thank you for that comment noted, absolutely. The second thing, CDC, we have a huge partnership with the CDC. We have received wastewater testing. So I'm going to brag about Tempe for just a second. Tempe started opioid wastewater testing in 2018. We were the first city to do wastewater testing for opioid. In March of 2020, we shifted those resources to COVID. We helped inform the CDC. They called us about how did you do this with local trust, with the local lab? And now they have stood up the National Sewer Surveillance for the nation. They've given us $1 million in 2021. We just received another grant for 2022. They actually came to us and said, will you apply for an additional grant? Because they are concerned about another outbreak of hepatitis that we saw in 2016 with the unsheltered. And in exactly what we're talking about in these waterways, and and how that affects public health. So Dr. Amy Kirby has been a thought partner, and actually, we know about everything that we're doing in Tempe. And we have a huge partnership also with ADHS and the county.
Awesome. Thank you for that. That's definitely, I mean, a lot more reassuring. And I totally understand, you know, trying to fit everything into a presentation. So I mean, I appreciate you, you know, dealing with my specific questions. My last one, it is kind of more definitely complicated. I mean, everything's complicated. I mean, like, there's not like, it's not one kind of person experiencing homelessness. I mean, there can't just be like, one way to approach everybody. So I definitely understand that. But I mean, I definitely heard, you know, people communicating, and I hear it too, all the time, of people communicating frustration over witnessing people on the street. But I was wondering, and I definitely appreciate, you know, I love how, you know, the city's buying the hotels and, you know, doing something. So I mean, it's great that we're doing, that we're doing that. I, you know, nobody else is taking that initiative. But I guess, and I want to see that. But I guess I would have appreciated, or is there any kind of way we can get the city to focus? Even if it was just a slide, the presentation would have made me happy, to see any discussion on the underlying causes or, you know, conditions that are manifesting into all these unsheltered people. I mean, is, I definitely don't want, I want more people, you know, in more cities to be involved in what you're doing. But I want it to go further than this. And I mean, even building, you know, buying these hotels, for me, is still just a first step in a lot of other steps that need that have to be done. So is that part of this overall plan to 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 focus and address on the underlying causes of so much unsheltered people? I guess it's kind of my last question.
Thank you for the question, absolutely. So I think the agenda was built regarding the continuum of care. So from the triage, the entry points of the engagement on the streets with our HOPE team, we drive around in a van 24/7 with our CARE 7, that entry point to transitional housing, whether that is at the church, or transitional housing in hotels, to what I shared with you, how we're building affordable housing in Tempe, and the funds to do that, or how to acquire more funds to do that. That is steps to housing slide that I've shared with you. And then the next person that is presenting is Irma Hollenby Kane, who will present as our housing director, deputy director, on the strategies and working with landlords, our housing inventory, and how that leads to the success of an individual, the whole individual. So we recognize, we see people from the entry point, and the case managers, we've got a two more case managers in the last few months to make sure that we are helping people through that continuum of care as we see it. Our CARE 7 has also become a licensed healthcare practitioner, a behavioral practitioner. So they will also be receiving reimbursement for some of the services that we are providing. And I share that with you, because it's never just one touch with an individual. It's recognizing that we as a city, if we're going to be a new American city, we have to provide all services. We're even looking at providing, in the next few years, substance abuse treatment ourselves, if we cannot find enough agencies to provide the treatment, and mental health care, long term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bar.
Yeah, and I just want to maybe pay back on one. One, I know you've been around for a long time and stuff like that. And I think one of the advantages of this discussion is, you know, us partnering together. I think that at the local and state level, for all of us, we have an opportunity here. Two things that come to mind is, nationally, there's a 311 number that's coming up. So we talk about trying to take care of, you know, the unsheltered and trying to do the right thing. But but one of the barriers is, is there's so many silos of people doing things that we're not talking to yet, right? So the possibility of us at the state level is the coordination of possibly the national level of the 311 number. How does that look like? How do we get that involved? How do we work with local governments on what we have, like example, Tempe, just not Tempe, but other cities? And then how do we coordinate that? We have things that we're doing good here, you know, that maybe, you know, that gets replicated or whatnot. But but we need to make sure that the coordination of that system is done well. Not just done, hey, we have it, just done well. And I mentioned this all the time to other cities, staffing and behind scenes is critical. Because if we don't have it, we're not doing it well. We can say we have it, but we're not doing it well. There's a huge difference. And then people soon go out of that system. They're just like, well, it's dumb. So in my 10 years of working at the CAS area with with the station I was at, you know, I, you get to see, and you get to actually talk to the people that have to use the systems. And the challenge is, sometimes the system is not there adequately for them to trust it. So that's one thing. The other thing is, you have an opportunity at the state level. And the opportunity too is transportation, working with access, billing, because these things do cost money, the services we do provide. I think on on our level, we want to provide services. But on your level, this is a nonpartisan issue. This is an issue just to take care of business and is this a win? But the win is this, we got to have access on board. So when we talk about things like transportation, right now, access is not good enough. I'll have to have a patient call within 24 hours of their appointment to get them there. They need to go now. That's when the 911 system gets gets hit. Then we're going on calls, the 911 is going on calls that are not relatively an emergency type call. So it's the frustration of the system. The system has to be less bureaucratic or bureaucratic in a way of having these things streamlined. The other thing is, we have to be able to bill for some of these services. So if we have an opportunity, and here's the thing, we often have an opportunity to have people to get services now because they want help now. Within 20 minutes, they change their mind. And those, they're on their way. But when we have an opportunity to transport to a certain key location besides the hospital, and to be able to get to bill for that, we're now getting the person to the right location, right place. And the other thing is, we're all actually covering those costs and services that the city can provide. So I think on the state level, that's, that would be a big help for us, not just for Tempe, but everybody. Just to look into those things that streamline those services and those abilities to make it to make them more effective. But billing and transportation is key on that. And we just need help on that. Am I out correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bar. I know we're running very, very short on time here. I did the early schedule till 10 o'clock. And I know some folks here, I think, probably likely have a hard stop. So I wanted to, Andrew, I think you might have a quick wrap up comment on that item, though.
Yeah, just what Senator Mendez said, I think, is sort of the reason why we have these sorts of meetings, which is, you've identified that we have root cause, causes of homelessness that didn't start in Tempe. It's not going to be solved in Tempe alone. It's going to take state leadership and regional coordination. And I think what Councilor Navarro was saying really gets at that, which is, our sort of request, and we think about how we can help you and how you can help the city of Tempe, really gets back to what can happen at a state level to provide the funding and coordination. So the kind of things that Rosa just talked about, that we're doing well here, can be replicated and scaled to perhaps, you know, really get at it, the root causes of the problem everywhere. Because it's not a problem that respects local borders. And that would be fantastic if we saw that level of state leadership in this next session. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Rosa, thank you so much for the presentation. Again, really great information. I know we went a little long, but I know this is a, this is a subject matter that's very important to everyone in this room. So even if we went long, it's a good conversation. And from my perspective, that's a good thing to have. So thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. Let me do this. I know we only have five minutes. I'm thinking we may maybe they run over by maybe about 10, 15 minutes. So I want to see if I can turn to Irma on the housing side, to see if she can give a, just a short presentation. I know Rosa previewed some of what we're doing with the city's Hometown For All program. But Irma gave a presentation regarding our housing inventory this past December 8. And so perhaps she could hit a couple of high points for us, just so our legislators can get that information.
I'd love to. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Again, my name is Irma Hollenby Kane, and I lead the city's housing efforts. Oh, let me turn on my camera. Well, I can't find that. So we will just move on. So I lead the city's housing efforts. I've been asked to update you today on the status of Tempe's housing inventory, and the strategies that we're employing to address housing affordability. You know, there's a powerful connection between homelessness and access to housing that people can afford. And having stable, decent housing in a safe and healthy community. And having stable, decent housing in a safe and healthy community is the foundation of all other economic and social activities. As you know, and have likely experienced yourself, over the past 20 years, housing costs as a share of our income has increased and it's putting more and more financial pressure on families, especially those who are middle to low income. And like many vibrant cities, Tempe has faced increasing challenges related to housing affordability. The problem, oversimplified if I may, is really the gap between income and housing costs. And in many communities like us, where we have strong labor markets and excellent amenities, housing development just has not kept pace with the population nor the job growth. So all of us municipalities, our stories are not much different, but Tempe's approach to addressing it is. The slide to go next. Yikes. Here we go. Sorry about that. Knowledge is power, right? So every couple of years since 2017, Tempe's performed a housing inventory and analyzes its performance in delivering on units at various price points. Tempe also benchmarks itself against three peer cities of similar size and attributes, all of us being college towns. And this is for the purposes of just providing a wider frame of reference for evaluating the state of housing in the city of Tempe. The data that we use for this study is largely HUD and American Community Survey. We conduct a gap analysis with this data to reveal the differences between the city's housing supply and the demand at various income tiers. There are three tiers that I'm going to refer to with some frequency in this presentation, and that's affordable, workforce housing, and market and luxury. So if I may, you know, the housing continuum means the range of housing options that are available to people. And it ranges from homelessness on one end of the spectrum to home ownership on the other. And it emphasizes that all forms of housing are connected to a community's health and vitality and economic well-being. Housing is considered to be affordable when a household spends 30% or less of its income, total household income, on housing costs. And conversely, a household is considered cost burden when they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. That's why we talk about housing affordability in the context of income limits and the rents or mortgages that are affordable within those income limits. To illustrate, if you look at the bottom right of the screen, I've included a table and I've outlined the income limits and associated affordable rents for that particular income bracket. So to give you context, let's say we have Mary, who's a head of household for four. She makes about $50,000 a year as a teacher. While economically, she's doing way better than many, she still struggles. Why? Because rents, considered affordable for her income, according to this chart, is somewhere between $973 and $1,500 a month. But the average monthly rent for a three-bedroom apartment, according to Apartment Finder, is nearly $2,300 a month. The average monthly rent in Tempe is $1,900. So next, we're going to get a little bit into the data. I'm not going to stay here too long, so hang in there with me. We're going to talk about owner-occupied housing and then renter-occupied. So we took a look at the city's owner-housing stock. And if I may turn your attention to the red font in the top or over to the right of the screen, Tempe has a deficit of housing available to those in all of the affordable categories. That's below 80% or below median family income, as well as a deficit of owner-occupied units in the luxury category. So as you can imagine, Mary, the teacher and her family of four, making $50,000 a year, will have a particularly difficult time finding a home to purchase at this price point. Ditto those who earn 200% or more of the median family income. That, they also will have difficulty finding luxury housing, so instead are probably owning housing in the market rate category. As I stated earlier, we compare ourselves with peer cities just to provide a frame of reference. And you can see here how we stack up against our peer and owner-occupied housing stock. The green and the blue on the graphs indicate luxury and market. The yellow is workforce and the bottom gray, orange and blue are affordable units. Right away, you notice how drastically different we all are from Boulder, for example, in the lone, in the luxury owner-occupied housing availability. You might also notice how Tempe and Provo are very similar in their housing profile.
I'm sorry, I just want to say really quickly, our city attorney just informed me, and this is why it's important to have an attorney at all things that you do, that the issues, we now have a quorum issue for our council. So I'll turn to her and ask, would Irma be allowed to finish her presentation or do we need to stop immediately?
Absolutely. Irma can finish her presentation, but at this point in time, there is not a meeting.
Okay.
So she is just, she is just presenting.
Okay.
As if the meeting is over.
Yes.
Thank you. So we looked at owner-occupied housing. Now let's go ahead and take a look at the rental housing stock. And so if I may again turn your attention to the red font on the screen, as you can see right away, Tempe has a severe deficit of affordable housing available to folks who make less than $62,000 or a year. And so that includes folks on fixed incomes, seniors, folks who are disabled, and folks like Mary, the teacher that I just talked about. Also note the deficit of rental housing available to those in the market and luxury categories. Now I'd like to bring your attention to the midpoint of the ranges and that healthy supply of workforce housing. We have a surplus of 17,000 units in that, in that particular category. The story that this data tells me is that low to moderate income Tempeans are likely renting workforce units that they cannot reasonably afford. These households with higher cost burdens like Mary are much more likely to experience some form of material hardship, including food insecurity, failing to be able to pay a bill, or even needing to forego medical care in order to be able to afford their housing. Similar to what I showed you earlier on peer cities, this is how we stacked up in the rental occupied stock. Below the black line indicates the affordable range. And here is where you see that Tempe looks very different from the other three cities. As you can see, Tempe's rental market is much more oriented towards middle and higher income earners than appears to be atypical for a college town. And then earlier, I shared Tempe conducts this study every year or every couple of years since 2017. If I may turn your attention to the two bars in the middle, in only two years, we gained ground in workforce units, but we did lose ground in the availability of affordable units. But really, all is not lost because, you know, rent is a function of basic supply and demand and development of additional housing units in any of the housing types equals better affordability for lower income households. So in summary, again, our rental market is more oriented towards middle and high income earners. The data indicates that we have a deficit of both owner and rental units in all of the affordable levels and the shortage is most severe in the rental market. And in particular, it affects the lowest income households. So Rosa alluded to this particular initiative and slid a little in her presentation. You know, we believe that all Tempeans benefit when neighbors like Mary don't have to struggle to stay housed and that they can focus their energies on other aspects of their life, like education, their employment, their families. And I want to share with you a little bit of an innovation that started back in 2019 that's key to addressing Tempe's housing affordability and it will provide quality housing that's affordable at all incomes. With specific focus, our specific focus is the, on the lower income households. And this initiative is called Hometown For All. So out of this effort was born the mayor and council's initiative, Hometown For All. This is how the city is making its own innovations alongside developers to create more affordable housing. Hometown For All is very forward-thinking and has largely operationalized our affordable housing goals by creating a sustainable revenue source, which is 50% of certain permitting fees. And that's coupled with voluntary contributions from developers and private donations. Also, an affiliate nonprofit was created to leverage these funds in order to create permanently affordable housing units. So essentially, we purchase land, we get it development ready, we negotiate or we partner with other developers in creating affordable units. And we use this momentum to redevelop and reimagine city-owned property. And this allows us to meet our housing goals faster and for the long term. This snapshot on the screen is our Hometown For All performance. And mind you, Hometown For All was established in 2021, so we're on our second year. And to date, the city has multiple development projects in various stages of planning and production. And as you can see from the slide, the city itself has made an investment of $4.5 million and the development, developer community has pledged nearly $11 million towards these efforts. So the beauty of all of this and what sets us apart in Tempe is that we know our housing, what our housing inventory is, we know where we want it to be. And with laser focus, the city is making substantial investments and leveraging resources with developers in order to create affordable housing. We have plans and we're steadfastly implementing those actions to help move the market to where folks like Mary can afford where she lives without having to sacrifice the basics. Thank you.
Thank you, Arma. Really appreciate it. One of the things I was talking to Senator-elect Birch about too, was we can absolutely get this information to all of our legislators so you can take a look at it. And if you have any further questions, Irma, Rosa, myself, anyone, Tom, Mark are all available to you to answer any questions that you might have about, once again, how the program is funded, what that money's being used for. So we just want to make sure that, you know, you can get all of those background materials and we're happy to provide them to you. Given the fact that, you know, once again, we have a quorum issue, I want to make sure, I love my city attorney and she always tries to make sure that I don't end up in prison one day, so I appreciate that. I was thinking, we're probably unfortunately not going to be able to get to items five and six today, but I should ask Tom and Mark, is there anything you might be able to provide the legislators with in terms of, you know, printed or written materials that they can look over?
Sure, Mayor. We're an honored guest. Thank you. We're finance guys, we'll get right to the point. Really, one of our legislative principles is preservation of revenues. And as you know, revenues are affected by the legislature. That's the state shared revenues. And those come about in lieu of cities being able to charge a local tax. The other thing that's very important is the, and you've seen it a little bit in print, sort of the food for home consumption and residential rental. Those are huge and very important funding sources for services that you've heard, you know, presented to you today. And Mark and I would be able to be more than happy to go into detailed discussions with you. But again, it's just our, our charge is just to kind of watch what's going on in the legislature and hopefully get your support on preserving these very important sources. So hopefully that was quick enough, Mayor. And usually I get the hook by the attorney.
Mayor, I could just say, we did hand out, this is a high-level overview of our budget. A lot of information on the back is a website address. And again, Tom and I are available. Any questions you may have?
No, thank you. No, very quick, I appreciated it yet. One of the things I can say is, being on the third floor of City Hall, Tom is probably in at 6:30 every morning. I don't know, I have tried for two and a half years to beat him into the office. I think I was going to get a sleeping bag one night and just camp out. So I can guarantee you, if there's any questions that you have as our legislators about the budget and things that are the city of Tempe's priorities, I know that Tom and Mark are always available to explain and answer any questions you might have and earn your support for things we need to do frankly collectively moving forward. So appreciate the presentation. I know we got to kind of wrap up here, but in terms of item number six, just state legislative principles, I know there was also a handout on the table here with the 2023 Tempe State Legislative Principles. I know you've all had a chance to beat Martilla, who's our government relations officer, and she can obviously answer any question about anything on this piece of paper as well. Or if there are things that you would like to see us advocate for at a city level, we're more than happy to do that as well. So I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out this handout for you and this information is available. And of course, Marge is also available to answer any additional questions after this meeting and people I have questions that I'd like to pose. So with that, is there anything that anyone would like to say since I've got to close this off? I spare hours?
I just wanted to encourage you to protect our HER revenues. We really rely on that. Our streets have gotten in kind of bad shape because of, but went to the state police. So just protect the HER because we need it. It's a safety issue for our residents.
Thank you. Yes, Representative Pranavis.
Thank you for going a little over time and making sure. I can definitely reach out to members and make sure, if you could file something and send it over to members of the state. And where we align, it looks like we're going to be, on the back. So I, make sure of that.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And I was going to say as well, just, you know, we're obviously happy to do another meeting like this at some point. And this is a very good conversation. I know the first subject matter piece on homelessness has kind of ran over a little bit, but obviously, I would say, I don't mind when things went over, if we're having a productive conversation and learning a lot of very critical information that I know that's important to everyone in this room. So if the, if our legislators would like to meet again at some point and have a meeting like this, we can all have forum, we can absolutely do that. We would be all more than happy to make the time. This is all very informative, but we just appreciate the partnership and all the advocacy you do on our behalf. Senator Epstein?
Very quickly, Marjorie, please wave, please, before you go, get Marjorie's phone number and put it in your phone. She is one of my favorite of all, with lobby's negotiating various cities, of course, unbiased. But if you have a quick city question, Marjorie will get you an answer very quickly. So keep that in mind. Great resource for all, you know, sending anything, she can get back to you real fast. So.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us today. I know as new legislators on this side, we're looking forward to working with you all and obviously, thank you for the patience that I hope you will have with us. We're learning all these new processes and glad to have Emily Melody too. Sorry. I'm meeting with Emily right after. To help guide us through Mitzi as well. So thank you so much and please know that we're accessible. We'll get to your phone of course too, so feel free to reach out.
Wonderful. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Mayor, members of council, thank you too for having us. I just wanted to echo what these legislators are saying. And thank you, Rosa, for that presentation that was very informative. That's such a big issue throughout our valley and state. And I really want to echo the congratulations that you've been giving to your staff and you for what you've been doing out here in Tempe. It's a, it's a great program, definitely a model for the rest of the valley here. So thank you for that and thank you for having us and for breakfast.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, staff as well. And I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day and a great weekend. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.